Order, if you would, please recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Get a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Chaney.
Present.
Alderman Fauch.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Mills is excused. Mayor Zaring.
Present. Thank you. We have four.
Got a full house tonight. This is good. And we're gonna start off with some ceremonial matters here. Got several service awards that we're gonna hand out. Recognize a few of our folks here that work for the city. And I am going to start off, we'll call up Shaylee Brookard. And Samantha Brown. And Chief, you might as well make your way up here, too. All right, so. Just carry this around with me here. Shaylee? Give me your five-year service award. And so, on behalf of the city, we want to present you with your five-year service award. We do appreciate your service to the city. It always amazes me. I've been probably active doing this, I think, for about five years, maybe a little bit over. So, we all kind of came on at the same time, and we rarely get to see each other a whole lot. So, it's always good to see y'all here and appreciate you guys hanging out with us and sticking with us. So, we appreciate your service. And I know you got family here. We're gonna bring them up. But I'm gonna let Chief talk about you a little bit, and then if you guys want to say something, we'll pass the mic on to you.
So, as you both know, they've been here both for five years. But Shaylee started out in our dispatch unit, and then she went to patrol. And she has been an asset to our police department. She is a go-getter, a great police officer, and I'm excited to see what the future holds for her. And then Samantha, I've had the privilege of watching her dispatch. She does an excellent job. She does a good job of taking the calls in and getting the information from people who are maybe not at their calmest, and getting them what they need, and then relaying that information to the officers. That is a very difficult job, and she excels at it. So, I appreciate both of you.
Thank you, Chief. We can bring the families in. And that's another thing, we thank the families as well. Come on in. If you got family here, come on up. We're gonna get a photo with you. You guys put up with just as much, letting us share your spouse and all of that. We'll have you come over here so you can take a picture there. And I know dispatching is not easy. So, and you guys work hard and a lot of hours, so we appreciate it. All right, next up, we have a five-year dedicated service award for Grant Perkey. Another one that, yep, I'll have you come down, City Administrator. Another one. Can't believe you've been here for five years. It's kind of amazing. Actually, it seems like you've been here longer than five years, to me. And maybe it is, because you've done a lot, and you've done a great job out there for us, and we appreciate it. But I'm gonna let the guy that knows everything about you talk about you here, so.
I'm glad for the work that Grant does. As you know, our park system has been doing a lot of improvements all over the place. A lot of the parks that you all have been a part of that, and seeing City Park especially, and all the work's been going on that. A lot of the grants that they've gotten to be able to do a lot of these projects. I'm thankful for all the hard work that Grant does. He's very good at getting out and knowing what the people are wanting, what the people are needing, as well as dealing with a high amount of part-time employees. And did I tell you how much he loves the outdoor pool? But he does a great job with that and communicating that. I mean, he's a great part of the team here that we have here in Harrisonville. And I think it's also great to be able to have someone that grew up here also be in a part of the organization as well. So, we're really thankful for all the work that Grant does.
All right. Next up, we're gonna ask our cares folks, come on up. Buckle up, phone down. I'm sorry, buckle up, phone down. Come on up. Yep, you guys go ahead and come on up. I got a proclamation. Can't believe it's this time of year again. You know, last year we did it. You come on up, too. You're not, you're familiar with all this. So, a great program. Then I'm gonna let y'all talk a little bit about the program as well. All right. So, buckle up, phone down, October 29th, 2025. Whereas the Missouri Department of Transportation and Missouri Coalition for Roadway Safety are challenging the community to buckle up and put your phone down. And whereas the challenge is simple, when you get into any vehicle, buckle your safety belt. And if you are the driver, put your cellphone down. And whereas over 62% of fatalities in 2024 Missouri traffic crashes were unbuckled, that's up 2% from 2023. And whereas traffic crashes are the leading cause of death for people between the age of 15 and 20, with distracted driving being one of the primary causes. And whereas by buckling up and putting your phone down, you will do your part to help make Missouri's roads safer and save lives. And whereas approximately 70% of drivers using cellphones in Missouri, traffic crashes were 22 years of age or older. And whereas it is time to join the movement and stand up and be counted, take the challenge at www.mo.org/buckleupphonedownarrivealive. Now therefore, I, Mike Zaring, Mayor of Harrisonville, Missouri, do hereby proclaim Friday, October 29th, 2025, as Buckle Up Phone Down Day in Harrisonville, and encourage all citizens to take the Buckle Up Phone Down Challenge and learn more about the risk associated with cellphone use and not buckling up while driving. All right, so, great program. Like I said, we've been doing this for several years, I believe. We see a lot of good results, and we appreciate all the time and effort that you all put into this program to keep it going. You too, sir, that you do. So, I am gonna pass this around and let you all tell us what all you do with that.
So, for those of you who don't know, Traction is our program in the school where we all come together and promote our fellow students that don't know much about traffic safety, just to, as you said, buckle up, put your phones down, just make sure you're doing everything you possibly can to stay safe on the roads for yourself and also other people.
This summer, we had the honor of going to the Traction Conference in Columbia, Missouri, and we got to be a part of a mock crash and get to experience what first responders have to do in the case of a crash and how they work together to make the best of everything for the members that are a part of the crash and the family members. We also had the honor of getting to be a part of a demonstration that they put on where they had, I think it was 43 chairs up in front of us, and they read all the names of the teens that had passed away this year due to a fatality in a car crash. And it was very surreal getting to be a part of that and realizing that those kids are just months or, I think, years older than us had passed, so.
Yeah, I just wanna say that I'm very proud of the four of these. We have a total of 18 people on our team. We call it a team because that's what it takes to get everything done, is a team, teamwork. So, I can tell you that these four people, these four ladies right here are dedicated. They're at every meeting, every function that we have. They're always there. They're always willing to speak about what traffic safety means to them, how it's impacted them, maybe even personally. So, I'd just like to thank you guys for always showing up. They were up on the square for the log cabin days. They had a booth up there, and we were able to man that booth all day Saturday. It was a long time, 12 hours, a long time for some of them. So, anyway, anyway, I'm just so proud of them. Whenever I do take them to conferences down to Columbia, I don't have to worry about them. They're mature. They're adults. And they take care of themselves. And then also what they do is they bring back ideas. They brainstorm and collaborate with other schools to see what they're doing to help their problems. So, they come up with a master plan, and then they bring it back and they implement it within to our school district or within our community here. And so, you'll be seeing a lot more from us if you follow Facebook, things like that, Instagram. You'll be seeing more stuff that we're gonna be doing. Thank you.
And thank you all for all that you do. All right, we'll have you come down this way a little bit. I'll let you guys in the middle. All right. Moving on, we had no public participation, correct?
No, sir.
All right. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the Board of Aldermen Regular Meeting, September 15th, 2025. Those were in your packet.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those stand, as written. Next, we have the approval of the Board of Aldermen Minutes Work Sessions, September 15th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion from Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Fauch. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And those will stand as well. All right, moving on to our agenda items. First agenda item, we have Council Bill 61.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the reappointment of Michelle Hart to the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
All right, and we have present Michelle to you here this evening. And again, Michelle is somebody that we're very familiar with. She served on the board previously and wanting to continue that service, so we're gonna bring that to y'all this evening.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Got a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Turner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills is excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 61 is now Resolution 2025-29. Next, we have Council Bill 62.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the reappointment of Cheryl Bush to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, again, I think we're all familiar with Cheryl Bush. She has done, again, she's served on the zoning commission for quite some time. Wants to continue doing that, so we'll present her to you this evening.
Make a motion to approve? Aye, second.
Motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Franklin. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Mills is excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 62 is now Resolution 2025-30. Moving on, have a public hearing, code amendments pertaining to complete streets. This item is gonna be continued to the December 1st, 2025 Board of Aldermen Meeting. Next up, we're going to open a public hearing on a special use permit for packaging, processing, and warehousing in the Service Business C2 District and a preliminary development plan for JBQ meets on property located at 2,000 North Commercial Street. Christina?
Yes. Okay, can you hear me? Christina Stanton, Community Development Director at Estates. This is a special use permit for the uses of packaging, processing, warehousing in the Service Business C2 District. Applicants proposing to rehab the existing building located at 2,000 North Commercial Street into a state-of-the-art USDA food processing facility. I'm gonna go over some of the recent history that's within the staff report, previous action section of the staff report. October 16th of 2023, the Board of Aldermen approved various code amendments, including the establishment of Section 405-565 Design Standards by Ordinance 3669. May 6th of 2025, staff held an initial pre-app meeting with the applicants regarding their desire to renovate the existing site and turn it into a state-of-the-art USDA facility. The planned operations facility do not include slaughter, but does include raw trimming and packaging. Expected odors include barbecue from the smokers. It was stated in this initial pre-app meeting that they were anticipating having rubs and sauces available for retail sales and having some hot foods available. Additionally, there was an interest to split off a portion or portions of the front of the property. The applicants have expressed they are hoping to have the building operational by January 2027. August 4th, 2025, the Board of Aldermen approved code amendments to allow uses of packaging, processing, and warehousing within the Service Business C2 District with an approved special use permit by Ordinance 3739, which is included in the packet. September 9th, 2025, staff held a second pre-application meeting with the applicants. In this meeting, applicants provided further details on their project stating that it would include food processing, marinating, cooking, and packaging. The applicants also discussed that they plan to add new pavement for three jocks on the eastern side of this building and to route the truck traffic only onto the Royal Street area to keep the truck traffic away from the employee traffic. And October 16th, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item and recommended by a vote, six to zero, to the Board of Aldermen to recommend staff's recommended change, recommend approval with the recommended change of allowing the special use permit for 30 years rather than 25 years, sorry, kinda. Some key issues that were identified in the staff reports include the applicant proposing, again, to renovate to state-of-the-art USDA food processing facility for the marinating, cooking, packaging, warehousing, cooked meats, until they can be shipped out to the various retail locations, Sam's, Costco, several others, I'm sure. The city's 2040 conference plan shows the property and surrounding area as regional commercial, which are areas of the city designated for highway-oriented commercial land use types. Again, this is a C2, a Service Business District. And those uses are allowed with an approved special use permit within this district. The existing building sits further back on the site, so again, there is potential for retail lots to be created along North Commercial Street. And the property is located with the Missouri 291 TDD Transportation Development District, which collects an additional 1% sales tax to fund public transportation improvements within the TDD. Under the Analysis Section of the Staff Report, zoning and uses are briefly discussed. These uses, again, are deemed appropriate for this district and this location as the building sits further back on site and has the potential for the additional commercial uses to be located along the front of the property. There are no additional requirements related to either of these types of special uses. Again, these are special uses for this district and the industrial district. They are permitted by right. Next, again, the conference plan is briefly touched upon. I mentioned earlier, it's a regional commercial, which looks at the highway-oriented types of uses. So, while this project that is proposed is not currently focused on retail, this is a user that would benefit to the proximity of the highway and may add more typical retail development, both as part of the applicant's project as well as the creation of additional first-tier commercial lots. Within the site design, building design areas, I briefly touch on. The site design, there's a list of the improvements that are shown on the site plan. Applicants, again, like I said, they intend to keep that truck traffic away from the employment traffic and kind of keep it to the back so that those trucks would come off of 291 under Royal and go to the back of the building and back around. A request for modification to the four-sided architecture is discussed under the Building Design Section of the Staff Report. The applicants have requested a modification to this requirement, Section 405-565-C4, for the rear or the north and the east side elevation, as these sides are not highly visible from the main streets and public view due to the existing vegetation and screening. Staff is supportive of the requested modification to this requirement as the rear of the building sits lower than Royal Street and is screened by existing trees, making it barely visible from Royal Street. There are some pictures in the packet to show this as well. And the east side is bordered by existing heavy vegetation along the unnamed intermittent stream. Under the review criteria, the last section of the analysis portion, we look at the character of the neighborhood, existing proposed zoning uses of adjacent properties, and the extent to which the uses are compatible. The length of the time the properties remain vacant, potential effects on neighboring property, ability for public facilities and services to meet the demand of the facilities and services generated by proposed use, which I do want to stop real quick and note that the only requirement, I think, here that was one of the discussions is to move the water meter outside, and that is being done. And to gain, and the gain to the public health, safety, and welfare due to the approval as compared to the hardship imposed upon the landowner if denied. So, those items are looked at within the report, and I can dive deeper in if you would like. The staff's recommending approval of the proposed special use for packaging, processing, and warehousing and the preliminary development plan with the following four conditions. One, all exterior building and site lighting shall comply with the requirements specified in Section 405-565-G of the city's municipal code. Two, the site shall meet or exceed all applicable landscaping and screening requirements contained in Section 405-565-F of the city's municipal code. Three, a modification shall be granted to the four-sided architecture requirement of 405-565-C4 of the city's municipal code to allow for metal panel and canopy elements to only be on the fronts, which is the south and the west facades. And four, the timeline associated with the special use permit shall be for 30 years, at which time a new special use permit is required to continue these uses.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak to this? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Does the board have any questions?
The designs look really, really nice.
Alderman Davidson.
Christina, looking at the photo, and that's been a while since I really paid attention to Royal Street, the off of 291, does that allow easy access for trucks and trailers to turn there and also then from there off of Royal Street into where the parking is? But I, looking at the photo, it looks like it probably is allowable.
Yeah, I know they've done modeling of the trucks to make sure that they can make those angles and make sure that there's room. This is also part of the reason I think that they're adding, well, they're adding some docks, but they're adding pavement, of course, to service those docks and to allow for them to be able to turn around back there to come back around the other direction.
Alderman Turner.
I'd say, well, effectively, I haven't, when we finished the Royal Street going down to the ball fields, I mean, the traffic. I mean, the trucks can be pretty much during the day, or weekends, I mean, when we reduce the ball fields, we got traffic.
When we ask them about truck traffic, they only see about, currently, one a day going in and out.
Yeah, and then, and then, and then, of course, we're actually talking about the main rural street, not the old rural.
Right.
I mean, both of them are called rural streets.
Well, the access of the ones to, for the ball field to be in that, the more northern.
Right, yeah. And then, and the trucks will turn there, too.
Right.
Turn again on the other rural street.
Did they say what the estimated employment would be?
They're gonna start out with 35 employees, with the future, in the next five, 10 years, increases to around 70.
So, kind of gradual?
As it relates to the traffic.
Hey, sir, could you guys come on up, and I'll have you give us your names and address, and then we'll let you talk on it there.
I'm Barry Holland. I work for R&amp;W Construction. We're working for the JBQ meets.
My name's Doug Henslick, 11050 Roe Avenue, Overland Park, Kansas, 66211. I am part of the development team that is the developer for the project. And anyway, we appreciate your consideration of our proposed project. And also, I just wanted to let you know that staff has done a great job going through the process with us and greatly appreciated. And, you know, really feel like, you know, this is gonna be a very expensive, state-of-the-art project. And hopefully, feel like from the elevations that we've provided, that I've really put my best foot forward to create a facility that Harrisonville would be proud of. And hopefully, we're gonna create a lot of jobs. And so, as it relates also, we're talking about truck movements. And, you know, based on, based on the estimate of trucks, it looks like there will only be one to possibly two trucks during a 24-hour period. So, it's not gonna be real extensive as it relates to that truck traffic.
I just, as we get to our other projects going with a new road to the new ball field, people should be anxious to use it, and they should have a lot of traffic. And then now we're putting trucks on it, too. I just didn't know how many trucks.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Fauch.
It's a great project.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, it does.
And it's gonna smell good, right?
Well, it's gonna smell so good.
If you like the smell of barbecue, you'll like the smell.
Well, if it's gonna smell good, are we gonna have a retail store?
That is the question.
We proved that earlier.
You know, we're looking at that right now. I don't think it's been a definitive advance around that. But that, that is definitely something that's in the works. And we hope to provide that. I think it'll be good for the community.
Thank you all very much. All right, if there's nothing else, then we're gonna move on, and we will move on to the first reading of Council Bill 63. Thank you, gentlemen.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville approving a special use permit for packaging, processing, and warehousing in the Service Business C2 District and preliminary development plan for JBQ meets on property located at 2,000 North Commercial Street in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, thank you. We'll bring that back for the second reading at our November 3rd Board of Aldermen meeting. All right. Next up, we have a public hearing, special use permit for RV and boat storage on land located at 1640 West Mechanic Street. I'm gonna open that up. Christina, I think you're back up.
Yes, the applicant is seeking approvals for special use for the uses of RV and boat storage on land located at 1640 West Mechanic Street, which is the pack right storage. And I'm just gonna hit on a few of the previous action items. We're gonna go back, though, to August 6th, 1969 first, because that's when the property was annexed into the city. Then, January 30th, 1979, the zoning map showed that 300 feet from Wall Street right of way was zoned Service Business, which was C3, is now C2 District. And further north was zoned Light Industrial M1 District. Then, on November 4th, 2019, the Board of Aldermen approved rezoning application, RZ19003, of approximately 6.29 acres renter place from Light Industrial M1 District to Service Business C2 District by Ordinance 3478. This ordinance included five findings pertaining to the proposed uses of many storage, and that is attached in the packet. October 16th, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item and voted seven to zero to recommend approval to the Board of Aldermen. Underneath the Analysis Section of the Staff Report, it stated that the property, like I said, is zoned Service Business C2 District. Proposed uses of RV and boat storage are allowed uses within the zoning district with an approved special use permit. Additional criteria for these uses are listed in Section 405-525-C7, which state boat, recreational vehicle, and/or any other vehicle, storage, open or enclosed of one or more similar vehicles, which are not the property of the landowner. vehicles which are not the property of the landowner. Open storage must be screened by a view reducing wall, fence, or landscaping material from adjacent roads and residentially zoned or used property. A fence with mesh screen was installed on the street frontage, aside, on the side of the property that fronts on Mechanic, as part of the mini warehouse facility. The city's 2040 Conference of Plan shows this area as employment light, which are places intended to support employment formats that are not appropriately integrated into the downtown or mixed-use settings such as office parks, institutional uses, campuses, or light manufacturing hubs in the community. While the city does not wish to see this use take up a large portion of developable land, this use seems to make sense in this location for the same reasons that were listed as the findings for the then proposed use of mini storage when the property was rezoned in late 2019. In support of the proposed special use permit, the property already includes screening. The property is a second-tier commercial property adjacent to other industrial users, and the proposed boat RV storage would be minimally visible from Mechanic Street right of way. There's a couple pictures we tried to take from the Mechanic Street right of way, I think you can just barely see the top of the mini storage facility from the fence and the screening. Again, review criteria that's in the last section of the analysis portion looks at pertinent criteria such as the character of the neighborhood, which includes daily activities and services of the businesses in the area such as Pizza Hut, Harrisonville Animal Clinic, Casey's, Aldi's, and the Nutrien Ag Solutions, existing and any proposed zoning and uses of adjacent properties, and the extent to which the proposed use is compatible with the adjacent zoning and uses. Again, the existing zoning is C2, which is compatible with the existing businesses. The proposed use fits in this location for the same reasons, again, that was the findings from the rezoning in 2019 for the mini warehouse use. And the extent to which the proposed use will seriously injure or the appropriate use of or detrimentally affect neighboring property. The proposed uses of RV and boat storage will not seriously injure or detrimentally affect the appropriate use of the neighboring property as the property is currently being used for mini warehousing and sits back behind many of the existing businesses that front on West Mechanic Street, and this use is already screened as I previously mentioned. Staff recommends approval of the requested special use permit with the following two conditions. One, the applicant shall install the required pavement improvements as specified in section 405-565-E3 prior to utilizing the space for the proposed use. And two, the time limit associated with this special use permit shall be 10 years, at which time a new special use permit is required to continue these uses. I do believe the applicant may have some to discuss.
Okay, all right, thank you. This is a public hearing, so, did you guys have, wanna come talk? Yep, come on up. Give us your name and address.
This other address thing's rude. I was kinda wondering about that. Bryce Renner, 27807 East 239th Street, Harrisonville, Missouri. I'm one of the owners of Packright Storage. First off, I wanna say thanks for approving at the planning zoning meeting. I apologize that I didn't bring this to anybody's attention then, probably would've been more appropriate, but due to my own ignorance, I didn't know that I should've done that. So, my apologies, and thank you for hearing me out. I'm here to discuss the pavement requirement tied to the approval of the application. Few of the reasons that I would like to discuss this is, I did just wanna reiterate that this is specifically tied to the special use permit, not the facility as a whole, of course, and that this is strictly temporary. Our goal here is to hopefully instead of have this property that's not being used right now, we can utilize it for additional revenue and to help offset some of the costs from the development that we've incurred up to this point. Our goal is to have it be mini self-stores. That's what we'd like to see it as we've sent it through approval and got it all documented with the city. That's what we would like to see, but as I'm sure you're all aware, that's a little bit of a process, so we're just trying to help in the meantime with some of the unused land to help generate some revenue for us. My concern with the hard surface requirement affected immediately for the special use application, one of the big ones is if we go pour in the concrete, you know, if, if it does take five, 10 years, we're just gonna be cutting out a vast majority of it to put the footings and the slabs in for the buildings when that time does come. I don't know when that'll be, but I certainly hope it's within the 10 years or faster, but it's just gonna be a lot of wasted material and money that we're trying to prevent, hopefully. Pouring the slabs and the footings prior is not really an option, because that's gonna leave me an inch and a half threshold around all of the entirety of each pad side for the buildings, which really isn't an issue, to be honest, for parking anything. It's more so a trip hazard having people in and out of there and a liability from an owner's standpoint, honestly. So my goal would be to, to have this, if you guys were willing to make any, I guess, work with us on that, to have this stay in effect through the special use term, which is listed at 10 years, and we're open to, I mean, really just about anything, asphalt millings, which can be compacted down, gravel, chip and seal, really anything that's just less expensive than asphalt or concrete and easier to work with in the future. But like I said, this is primarily meant to be temporary, and hopefully we can get this thing developed, and we're hoping that the boat and RV storage will help us generate some revenue to where we can move forward quicker and get this thing developed and have a, you know, finish off the property that I believe is, is turning out nicely. So, that being said, we're not trying to take any shortcuts or disregard any regulations or future goals of the city. We're just trying to utilize some of the unused ground and development to help it move forward, and we appreciate your consideration.
And you might hang up there, 'cause they may have some questions or anything. I just wanted to make sure you're requesting the board to consider waiving the paving of it and using an alternate material on that, so, yes.
Okay, so can we clarify what exactly we're asking them to pave? Not the whole road going in, only what is, I mean, because that's, I mean, you've got heavy trucks and stuff going in there, that would just be a constant repair job. So are we asking them just on, within their property? What are we asking them for? Just out of curiosity.
That's a good question. Yep.
Yeah, I was just looking at my packet and seeing, I don't see the site plan should've been in here, but for some reason does not appear to be, so I apologize, I don't know why that is. But what's being asked for pavement would be that portion that they were talking about using for this use at this time, and of course, the applicant is requesting a waiver of that requirement, at least through the life of the special use, because they don't wanna have to rip it out and redo it and have those issues that he just mentioned.
Of doing that, so just the area, not the road going into, that's now a gravel road, you're talking the area of the site for the RV parking.
It's actually within his property, 'cause that road is not.
Gotcha.
So, so you're just asking for a road from the gravel road to his entrance?
Yeah, so, we have, we have the, an apron that comes off of the road that takes you to Nutrien Ag Solutions. We have the concrete apron, and we have a driveline that goes all the way through the, there's five buildings in this first phase, if you will, of Packright Stores, that's all concrete. We're just supposed in the southeast corner of the property, so you can still pull in on concrete, the driveline's concrete, it's just you pull in and go right essentially to go to the mini storage, you would pull in and go left to go to the boat and RV.
And that's the area that we're talking about, is where those RVs would be parked at?
Yeah.
That's what we're talking, the surface for that.
So we want them to be parked on a surface, not on just ground?
Correct.
That's what we're at, that's what we're discussing, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And our requirement is concrete, is that, is that?
Concrete or asphalt.
Concrete or asphalt?
And, yeah, forget the impervious or something, I think is the word used.
Impervious or...
Yeah.
Deteriorated.
Yeah, it's, it's, referred as a hard surface requirement, but yeah, there's specifics as far as four inches compacted gravel with asphalt or concrete.
I think what we would need from the board is, there's a site reading two weeks from now, so staff would need to review and get with him on if you're interested in even looking at it.
The alternatives, that's what I think we're asking, we're asking for what alternatives that we could potentially consider other than asphalt or concrete? Is that, is that where we're...
Alderman Turner, go ahead, pull your mic down if you would.
So, how big is this area?
I'd say it's roughly about two acres.
Two acres?
About six. I have the exact, I can give that for you.
It's a significant amount of concrete that's gonna be in there.
Yeah, right, yeah, right, I mean, two acres.
Can you build your own plant on site?
Yes. After the first phase, what we already did, I wish we would've.
I do have a large scale, I don't know, like I said, why it didn't get into the packets. I pulled it over, I'm guessing there was something wrong with PDF.
It's, it's all open storage though, right? It's, there's nothing covered about this.
Right.
About the special, for the specialty direct, yes.
Yeah.
So if this is sort of a temporary thing lasting a few years, then you're gonna replace that with storage?
Yeah, full intent is to go with the final plans that we've already got approved to the city, which is develop the remainder of it with mini self-stores. This is just temporary to, to help with cost in the meantime.
Okay, and what, what do you think the capacity is for boats and RVs?
Gosh, I have that written on there, I think. Down here, 30, 37 places.
39.
39.
It's probably gonna be a long market for that, even after you, your temporary period.
Possibly, possible. It's better, it's better than nothing.
You mentioned some, what alternatives are you, would you be suggesting to?
The only ones I really know of is gravel, which I know isn't super appealing to most municipalities.
Right.
I know some municipalities allow for compacted like asphalt millings, that would probably be the most attractive option, just from what I've seen, but also chip and seal's not affordable, it's not a viable option either, it's fairly easy to do.
What's the price tag on putting concrete on two acres?
Uh, a lot, a lot. It's about $6.50 a square foot, I don't know the price exactly.
Could've told you that about 20 years ago.
Do you have that in the numbers?
No, well, I have, but it's all, I bring a lot of numbers. I don't know off the top of my head, I should've probably wrote that down, but yes, I do have it, but I don't have it off the top of my head. I know it's about $6.50 a square foot, chip and seals like a dollar a square foot. Asphalt millings are cheaper than that, so it's a significant difference.
All right, Alderman Dohrha.
It's probably for Christina, is there any impact to the neighbors to the south if he doesn't do the concrete and the, or the asphalt? I would assume not, but...
I can't think that there is. The biggest issue, of course, cleanup afterwards, which they're gonna have to do when they pave the site and put the foundations in for the mini warehouse facilities. They do have a detention area a little bit south of that, in between the other property immediately to the south at the furthest east. So obviously making sure that that's being protected, that there's a silt fence for that.
I did the calculations on two acres, $566,280.
And then to turn around and redo it and tear it up again.
Any other questions? So at this point, I think what you were suggesting is that we consider for the second reading, November 3rd, any alternatives that might be available at that point.
If the board wants the staff to...
I would recommend it. One, one dollar an acre, or one dollar would be $87,000. Still an expense on theirs if they would use, it would be one dollar per square foot rather than the $6.50 square foot, and that would be about $87,000, and that's still one of the expense for temporary.
All right, so I got one, yes, two, three?
Oh yeah, I don't see a point in putting something in you're gonna tear up.
Five, six. One holdout down there.
I don't wanna make them...
All right, so...
He knows your address, too.
So between now and the second reading on November 3rd, you'll have more discussions on what the alternatives that would be acceptable at that point, and then we'll do the, yep, get with Christina.
So to be clear, I need to deal with Christina.
There you go, yep.
Yeah, okay, I'll do it.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying the case.
Also, I want to say one of those, I just got a message, somebody probably watching, I don't know anything about type five base rock, but that may be an option that would be considered as well.
Yes. It is a public hearing, so...
County uses that on all the gravel roads, good stuff, it gives my accent, it's a good service.
When I built my shed, I used AB3 crush.
Yeah.
That's something like that we would have used with the current beginning, like we have future, so we wouldn't really be tearing that out.
You could reuse it.
It's correct.
You can bring your concrete plant in and use that in your concrete plant.
All right, anything, any more text messages or anything else anybody has? Well, thanks for your input, we appreciate it. All right, thank you. Anything else from the board? Christina, nobody? All right, I'm gonna close public, ah, public hearing on that one, and we will go ahead and do the first reading on Council Bill 64.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville approving a special use permit for RV and boat storage on property located at 1640 West Mechanic Street in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, thank you, and that will come back on November 3rd. You'll get with Christina, and you guys will work out some alternatives there. Awesome, thanks. Next up, we have the first reading of Council Bill 65.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, amending Municipal Code Chapter 135 regarding purchasing approvals in sections 135.220 and 135.230 regarding the regulations for purchasing levels within the city's purchasing policy.
Jeremy.
Good evening, Mayor. Before you deny, I've had a chance to read my memo, the staff report there is, this really is to ask for the approval of the board to give the staff more leeway as they look to make purchases in the modern era. Inflation over the last five to 10 years has increased the, the cost of many of our products and has made purchasing then more difficult. There's, you know, I've used the example in here of, you know, the fire hydrants, you know, about just shy of $4,000 apiece, and if you, you know, for the last look, and if you need to buy more than, you know, three or four, then we're over our purchasing limit that, where we have to go out for a bid. And then the problem that we get into is that for a $20,000 purchase, suppliers do not want to bid, they don't wanna meet the requirements of a bid, and they'll just tack that price onto the cost of the material. We've, we've seen that with Transformers in the electric department, many of the supplies that the Polyworks departments use, even IT things that we, we start to look at, if we can't buy those on a purchasing consortium-type agreement, then we're stuck going out to bid and for something that may be as simple as, you know, 10 PCs. And so we, we looked around to, for what other organizations around us do, we looked at what the state does, and we, we settled that we felt like if we could get to the $50,000 mark, that that gave staff plenty of leeway to be able to do, to get their quotes, and we're not saying that we're not gonna do the due diligence of getting written quotes for these products, and I believe that everybody is doing that. However, there is just a time, both interior and exterior to us, that is being built into these costs if we continue to bid many of these smaller projects. Can I entertain any questions?
Is this governed by state statute at all?
Uh, this is...
Cities can enact their own purchasing policies, you would be amazed at what St. Louis and Kansas City, their authorizations are, so as long as the elected officials direct city staff, city staff and elected officials can work together on a purchasing policy that works for everyone.
What other municipalities did you look at?
We checked in Raymore, Belton, Kansas City, and then the state of Missouri, and then there were a few others. Honestly, Raymore's was shocking to me, it was actually less, I think they'd think over $5,000 for them, must be bid, which I found, that means they're, they're doing a lot of work for a $5,000 expense. I can't recall right now, I wanna say that Belton was around the 15, maybe they'd be on to 20, State, I believe, is at 100. So it really, it really kinda depends sometimes on what the type of thing is. This will not change projects, like, so if we were doing a engineering or a, something that actually required planning and moving materials and hiring contractors that required a bid and a bond... and hiring contractors that required a bid and a bond and those types of things, that, that is not affected. This is purely the purchase of products. So, um, there, there are moments where the, it just, it may not make sense. And I'm certainly willing to accept a lower number if that's what, uh, you guys feel comfortable with. But I also, you know, will work within, inside the confines of what you feel is appropriate.
Looking past this staff, okay? Which does, does provide a concern, okay, because whatever we decide here obviously affects us in the future. Is there a notification though to the board in regards to, let's, let's say we do increase the limit of anything that would be between what currently is, is in play and also what you're, you're proposing? That with the board would be notified in regards to that. I think, you understand where I'm coming from?
Yeah.
This isn't this staff that we're necessarily, we're looking at, we're looking at what happens in the future as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And we can definitely, um, include that as part of the weekly wrap-up. Those type of reports. Yeah, most large expenditures do. Um, sometimes, you know, there may be a few oversights here and there on those. But for the most part, those are already, um, going in there. Everything is already approved in the budget. So this is not including anything that's outside of budget. Because anything that's outside the budget has to come back for a budget amendment anyway. So this is purely budgeted items that are being treated as a supply for the work of the city.
Plus, I think there's already like four levels of review within staff and within.
For example, let's say that, uh, somebody in Matt's apartment has, they've got the budget, then they go to get all their quotes. Then that comes to Matt for review. Then that comes across my desk for review. Then that goes to Brad's desk for review. Anything that is over that five thousand dollar limit, or actually anything over twenty-five hundred dollars is getting that, that level of review. And that wouldn't change.
How long have the current limits been in effect, do you know?
As far as I, as long as I can remember, it has always been this way. So at least twenty-three years.
All right, any other questions for Jeremy? Thanks, Jeremy, for your work on that. We'll bring that back to our November third Board of Alderman meeting as well. And, uh, next up, we will have council, uh, this is actually a administrative ordinance. So this is Council Bill sixty-six.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville amending the operating budget for the City of Harrisonville, Missouri for the fiscal year January one, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five and establishing an effective date.
All right, Jeremy, budget stuff.
So this one is, uh, a little more than that is GMT, which is, uh, in effect, a reimbursement from the federal government for providing, uh, ambulance service to Medicaid patients. And so by participating with that program, there is obviously a pretty significant loss that we take on every one of those calls. And this is in some way a program that they've created that is all, I, I'm going to be honest, feels a little bit pay to play. But we create the expense and we re, they reimburse us for more than what we expend. It is, so that's why you would see increase, increase in the budget for both the expenditure and the corresponding revenue. So the more we spend, in this case, according to their, um, accounting firm, the more we receive back based on our run numbers from prior years.
Doesn't sound like a scam at all.
Any questions? No? This is a, uh, this is a administrative ordinance, so.
Make a motion to approve?
No, it's, uh.
No, suspend the rules. Take it to a second reading, I'm sorry.
All right, I got a motion from Alderman Milner to suspend the rules on Council Bill sixty-six and move it to a second reading.
Second.
Got a sec, who seconded that? All right, Alderman Chaney, uh, roll call please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Mills is excused.
All right, thank you. Second reading, please.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville amending the operating budget for the City of Harrisonville, Missouri for the fiscal year January one, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five and establishing an effective date.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Mills is excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill sixty-six is now ordinance three, seven, four, six. Uh, moving on, Alderman and committee reports. Let's start with Alderman Milner.
I have nothing, thank you.
Alderman Milner has nothing. Alderman Dorhoff.
I have nothing as well.
Nothing. Alderman Fauch.
Go online and vote for the Harrisonville Schools, uh, project.
Uh, yep. T-Mobile project, yep.
Million dollars at stake.
Yep. All right, Alderman Turner.
We had great weather for festival and a good turnout. I don't think we had that many problems. Everyone seemed to enjoy themselves, stuff. It was kind of hot for the parade, but it was good weather, but.
All right, thank you. Alderman Davidson.
Welcome, Mayor.
Nothing. Alderman Franklin.
Regarding the Parks and Rec, um, wanted to let everybody know that the winterization has already started taking place out at the park. So drinking fountains and bathrooms and, uh, the water stations are going to be shut off now and get ready for the winter. Brewery Club and, uh, Parks and Rec are going to be doing, participating in Truck or Treat, which is this coming October, uh, the twenty-sixth on Sunday from three to five. They are asking for non-perishable, non-perishable food items to be donated if you'd like to bring, um, some. The winter basketball, uh, registration, uh, the early deadline has already passed, but the late registration is open until, uh, October twenty-sixth. And the games run from, uh, December sixth and then, uh, February the four, through February the fourteenth. So, um, our membership passes, uh, there will be a discount provided to, uh, residents, uh, coming up in December for the membership passes. And our number of members that we do have, uh, currently is five thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight. So we're doing really well with that, so that's all we have.
All right, thank you. Alderman Chaney?
Let's see. Being in youth football, involved with, uh, coaching fourth grade this year and the T-Mobile grant, I really got into trying to hype up that and write letters to people to get involved. And, uh, what I think I found astonishing about all this was the amount of opposition to Harrisonville winning the T-Mobile. Because we've got a nice stadium and there's, there, I, I can't believe there's that separation in our community and that lack of love for our kids, that it came out, the people saying our kids don't need that money. And we got less than a week left to pretty much get a million votes. It just, it kind of hurt me as a community-minded person that our folks can't back us up or won't back us up because they hate Harrisonville or don't like some part about it. So, um, as I bring anything to the city, I bring that statement there that, uh, it feels like there's a little fracture somewhere still in our community and we're not, uh, we should have easily been able to pull this out, I think.
No, good comments, yep. Thanks for sharing that. Didn't realize that. All right. Next up, we have the report from city administrator.
All right, your take back is going to be October, the Saturday, uh, the twenty-fifth at Walgreens, uh, Truck and Treat at the Square. As mentioned earlier on the twenty-sixth. Then Friday, the Halloween on Pearl Street on the thirty-first. If you've never been, ever been down here when they do that on Pearl Street, it is amazing how many kids are down on the street, uh, going through. Uh, also Friday, I recently selected Matt Carver for the Public Works Director, so I want to congratulate Matt.
Congratulations.
Then on the, uh, South, uh, Service Area Sanitary Sewer Project, uh, staff is working and mowing, clearing, leveling, tilling and seeding and straining areas of the project need to be covered before winter. Uh, we're also still working with the bond attorneys on the rest of the project and, and Pat and Ferry co-op, the bond attorneys have been pretty cooperative with us, uh, on the project as well, which were much in relief. Uh, Royal Street Extension Project, Alex would say he's more hopeful.
Yeah, I would.
And, uh, that, that might be, uh, close to be finalized on that. And then, um, James to Blueberry, uh, Drive, if you've been looking at those, uh, pictures and the, the large amount of the storm waters, the lines that are going in there, it's, they're, they're huge. It's a huge project getting done. Uh, that's going to stop a lot of the water issues in that area for a long time. Additionally, the Ash, uh, Street Bridge and Town Creek, uh, project has started. Yes, we are aware that they had to remove trees. They had to remove the trees because the road's being lifted. And there's some stormwater project that's being, uh, completed, uh, as a part of that project. Parks Department was involved with identifying those trees as well. And so, uh, we're sad that anytime there has to be trees, I did, uh, check with the local historian. There, none of them were historic. Uh, they're exact words to me. Just because they're old doesn't mean they're historic. And, uh, so that's why they were, uh, for that project. Then the, uh, Bechardite Stormwater, uh, Drainage Improvement Project, uh, that is actually getting close to getting, uh, ready for a start date as well with that, with the last property, uh, for that easement. Uh, the Cutter, uh, the Concrete Curbing Gutter Program has, uh, started and they're working, uh, throughout town. Highway two, uh, Money Tree Contributory is, there's, uh, been a, a fairly good meeting that we had with them last week. Uh, so we're hopeful that, that project to be moving forward. Uh, South Commercial Street Extension, we're waiting for the A date. A date means acquisition date from MoDOT so that we can begin the right-of-way, uh, for that project. Uh, I forty-nine on and off ramps, uh, from the Justice Center, uh, to, at, to the railroad tracks. If you all recall, we received the federal funds, uh, to do that project and we're also returning it in for cost share projects, cost share monies, uh, which will lessen the amount of, uh, monies for the city's, um, uh, contribution. Then there's, uh, six, uh, survey and engineering design projects that are listed out for you all as well as requests for qualifications as those projects are moving forward based on the, um, water and sewer projects that you approved last year as part of the, uh, nine-year plan. And then the, uh, Police Department, there was a, uh, Charlie Kirk, a birthday vigil at the amphitheater. There was no problems and no concerns with that. We also, there's been some concerns or, uh, things that have been talked about with our FLOC cameras. If you all recall, uh, we received a grant, uh, to purchase, uh, eight cameras. We went through the FLOC system. We also, the Sheriff's Office is utilizing those as well. Those aren't an intrusive, uh, type of camera system. Those are for cars that have been stolen to, um, someone fleeing from a robbery or whatever they may be. That's an excellent, uh, law enforcement tool, uh, for our police department to utilize, uh, in our area. Uh, but you will be having, uh, a resident come to complain to you about them, uh, at your next meeting in November. Then the Fire Academy, uh, started with twenty-six students. Remember, uh, the election that's coming up, Harrisonvilltogether.com. Parks Department, if you've not been out to see the progress on the T-Mobile, uh, project out there, it's looking really nice. Hopefully, we're getting close to being completed on that project and will of course invite you all out for that, uh, to see that, uh, the finalization of that. And there was lots of concrete, Alderman.
I don't like concrete. I like mortar, not concrete.
East Elm Estates plans have been received and under review. MMT technology was approved by the Enhanced Enterprise, uh, Zoning Board of Directors. That's going to be coming to you in your second meeting in, in November. That's a facility that may be located in the southwest part of town, bringing fifty jobs, uh, to the community. Beres Ridge did receive their approval from MoDOT for the second entrance and has been turning in all their paperwork and staff started working with them. We're hoping that that project's going to start moving forward here fairly quickly, uh, on that. Uh, some of you have mentioned to me, we have gotten complaints for where the old hospital was and the growth in that area vegetation. Coach Department has been, uh, issuing, uh, letters on that and that is in our process, uh, for, um, enforcement. And then Cedars Crossing, uh, had an engineer problem. Uh, they got a new engineer and that project is, uh, hopeful to start moving forward fairly quickly as well. So should see, uh, two developments moving, uh, on the housing side of things, uh, fairly quickly. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Good report. The, uh, September twenty twenty-five municipal court report, we're in, was in your packets there. Uh, questions from the media? Thank you, sir. Uh, with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Davidson with the second from Alderman Milner. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Take about ten minutes and we'll get started on work session. Thank you.